As we've had in the last five years, just not the 7% increase that we're seeing right now. We will use these averages to budget by month. We will also, I will probably use the last four months if we use that five-year average. I will take that number and add a percent for our budgeted sales tax revenues for next year. Just want everybody to see that. Yes, sir.
Go and talk a little bit on the budget.
Yeah, so I've got a lot of budget numbers in right now. We are still working on our salary budget for everybody, so everybody can see that. And obviously, we still do not have health insurance numbers yet. They said the last week of September. Here we are. We don't have it yet, so I'm hoping early next week we'll have something. But as soon as we get the numbers for salaries, I will try to kick that out. If you guys would like one without salaries, I can kick that out early. But that's up to you all.
We're gonna try and push the draft out to everybody as soon as possible.
I'm hoping that we can get everything knocked out within the next week or so. Again, that all, a lot of it depends on health insurance. Right now, we'll have an insurance committee meeting before the next committee meeting for you all. And hopefully, we'll have something to discuss and bring to the council at that point. Any may have any questions? Any may have any questions from the last financials that we had here? I know I had just gotten those to you last time. All right.
Thank you, Lou.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move down into committees. That's the main part of the agenda. Just wait, if you got anything else. Mr. Magnus, it's coming to you.
Okay, the only thing that we had in finance other than the financials, and Lou's already addressed most of that. I think gone a couple weeks, so I'm getting back to July financials and having gotten all the way through them. But we do have, from committee, we moved up the opportunity to aid the Ladder Harrison with funding and to waive the electrical permit fee. And I looked in the packet and I didn't find the amount. I was trying to find the exact amount that we had set.
Thirteen thousand, seven hundred and fifty.
That's what I thought it was, but I didn't see it in the packet. In the minutes. I would make a motion to approve the expenditure for thirteen thousand, seven hundred and fifty.
I have a motion in a second. Okay, may I intersect here just a second on discussion? Can we do that by invoice like we did last time?
Yeah.
I just don't wanna hand over the money to him that we will pay off an invoice, so we have, we did that last year?
That's 100% the way I'd like it.
Okay, okay. Will you?
I will amend the motion to set by invoice only.
Second.
I second that, yes.
Motion second for thirteen thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. Like, are you funding by invoice only? Oh, let's see here. There's another pledge to, but we go back to all of the favor by eye. Eye. All opposed, same. Motion carried. Okay. Within that, you asked Rick for the waiver of the electrical insulation fee?
Yes, and actually, since I came in and talked to you before, we've got eight more buildings that are coming on paying for their own lights, pickups, and all that, and their own power on the lights. So we're actually getting the main strip going out towards Edwards right now. So it's at seventy-five dollars a pop. You know, that, hey, go ahead and get these things lit up, that's what I'm asking for.
And committee, we discussed, I think, either two or three. Correct?
What we go with later, maybe, remember? Two or three waivers?
Right, well, two or three.
Well, that was all this is. Yeah, this is, it jumped from, it jumped from fifty thousand when I came before you before. In the next four or five days, I had enough businesses between there. On the main road over there, on 65 coming up and down around the square, I've had, right now, we've got eight, but I'm actually looking at probably two more that's gonna be coming online that are, have showed initiative to it, to do. So actually, this project has jumped from fifty thousand to fifty-five thousand, one hundred and thirty dollars with their company reasons for their own lights.
But to waive those fees, they still have to be inspected.
Yeah, I'll still, I'll still contact Jeremy before any pickups are done.
We would still issue permit if it was being noted as waived.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to waive the fees on the permit.
May I make that motion?
Second.
Motion in discussion.
Now, how much are we talking about waiving total? I mean, just so that it's clear, we're talking at eight times seventy-five dollars, correct?
Is there eight or ten?
Well, are you capping it right now, or are we gonna do this as?
I, let's say.
Any electrical permits associated with the Ladder Harrison project? For 2018. That way, maybe not extended every single year, but at least that way.
Then that is my motion to waive fees for any business that participates in the Ladder Harrison for the 2018 season.
I'll second that. Are you withdrawing your?
I withdraw my first one.
And your second? Okay. I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? There being none, all of the favor by eye?
Eye.
All opposed, same? Thank you. All right, Mr. Magnus, yes?
That's all.
Thank you. Mr. Ove, I think you're up.
Mr. Wilson, you're up.
Well, I made it, 'cause he called me and he said, "You are coming?" I said, "Yeah, maybe five fifty-nine, but I'll be there." That last, the last committee meeting, we discussed the website. We just wanna let you know about that. They want us to renew for, for the responsive website to go to this new, this other vendor possibly that, you know, I don't have papers with me, I probably still have them in the last meeting. They were considerably, yes, to go with Gabbard Communications possibly. It's twenty-three forty-nine per, and then yearly after that, it's just thirteen forty-nine. Thank you. To go, but the current vendor we're with is Brooks Jeffrey. To update it to a responsive site, they would like, they would like to charge us twelve thousand dollars. We just kinda got to looking at it. Kind of, each addition of yours, twenty-four hundred. They provide more space. I don't know. We discussed it, but I just wanna let you all know what I'm kinda looking at and see if you all on our board kind of what we discussed in committee. If you have any questions, please don't hesitate to ask.
So this thirteen forty-nine is guaranteed every year after that?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, well, hold.
Well, it says each year after, so.
Right now, yes, that's what it is, but, you know.
We have not actually entered into a contract with it all yet.
No. They kinda wanna spotlight Harrison, or the municipality, spotlight Harrison with other municipalities across the nation, especially in the Midwest, to do a lot of school, educational institutions, cooperatives, and so.
We will probably be one of their first government entities. And they, like Mr. Wilson said, they wanna use us, not as a guinea pig, but as a platform that they can build up of, and they will take our platform and show it to other cities and other government entities, which is some level plus two. But this is a, you know, it's been seven years since we, well, I think we've got, with her website, I think it's been seven years, something like that. But anyway, we have not revamped that website. And we asked Brooks Jeffrey about it. They made a presentation, and then Gabbard came over and made a presentation. And, well, I hate to say it, but Gabbard kinda sold me, you know, and he kinda sold David too, and some of our staff also. So this is a expense over and above our budget. This is not, we did not put this in the budget, so.
So where will be the fund, funding come from, the reserves?
Yep. It cannot be reserved.
I'd make a motion to go ahead with Gabbard's bid.
Second that motion.
I have a motion in second to go with Gabbard's bid. Any discussion?
As I said in committee, I don't even know why this is under discussion, because we're getting better service and cheaper, probably a lot less. So I don't even know why.
Well.
I understand why.
Yeah, but we didn't, we didn't, we wanted a new website design, so we went out and actually researched it, so. Anyway, any further discussion? There being none, all of the favor by eye?
Eye.
All opposed, same? Motion carried. You after, David. That's gonna make a big plug, Garcia. Okay, Mr. Ove, you have anything else?
That's all I have.
All right, Mrs. Craggar?
Yes. Chief Holt, do you have anything to add to this?
Uh, no, just a person in the new truck. And like I mentioned in committee, I brought this to the committee for, to let y'all know that they went up thirty thousand dollars. We've got a bid for, the bid now is for forty-five days. As you see there, I talked to the salesman yesterday and asked him what he thought would happen after forty-five days. He couldn't give me an answer. He's, I don't know, he's, and normally give bids for thirty days. They went and give it this one for forty-five. After that, it will change. Some of the guys in the fire department talk about a Quint. I'm all for a Quint. The problem is, they're a million dollars, and we don't have a station that they fit in right now. We'll have to do some remodeling, reconstruction. The closest one that it might work in is right here, Station One, and it'd be right beside the ladder truck we've got now. And a Quint is a small ladder truck. It's a single axle, like a seventy-five foot ladder. So I brought this to the council and committee to let everyone know where we stood, where we've, it went up with this amount. We have the money in the, in the account for new equipment, and just wanna let y'all know where we stood with it.
Actually, Marvin and I have talked in dits about this fire truck personally. There is a few firemen that would like to see a Quint, but at this time, we have money available to buy a new pumper, which we replaced, what, a ninety-six?
Ninety-six long pumpers.
A Quint is, like you said, probably totally outfitted, is close to a million. We would have to borrow the money. We do not have that money. We have about five hundred and seventy-eight thousand, I think, in our fire fund, our equipment fund. We would have to borrow the extra money to buy a Quint. And we, we've talked it over, and a lot of remodeling would have to be done and everything, but I really think it is, I'm gonna push out, that we ought to buy the pump, regular pump truck, because in two years, we, we will have a thirteen, 2013, that will be available, that we will be able to sell for X amount of dollars. That will go towards a Quint.
Or traded in.
Or traded in towards a Quint. And we'll have some bargaining power there, we've not a lot, but anyway, and we may have the money to pay for it then too. So my recommendation is that we buy the pumper at five hundred and two.
Prepay five hundred and one thousand. Then at this six, please.
Very three.
Yeah.
I'll make the motion that we do so. Buy the pumper.
Okay, I have a motion to buy the pumper. That, that's right. Second. I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor, when I, anytime that, that city does anything, I always feel like, whether it's Christmas, Christ, or whatever, that, that I have to be the guardian of some of the funding, not that anyone else or yourself does. But I had so many comments in regard to this and questions, I just wanna make sure it's something that we need. And indeed, the ninety-six pumper needs to be replaced. And are we looking at our long-term needs for the department as far as any equipment that we purchase?
Please look.
And I'm making the assumption, obviously, that the chief and yourself and members, key members of the fire department are doing that. So, you know, when we talk about, I don't know the difference in a Quint and a pumper. I don't know the 2013 that we're looking at trading in. So some of those discussions, I feel like either need to be made earlier than council and brought up, or we need to at least make sure that everybody's on the same page. Whenever we went through the discussion of the infrastructure tax, I was not just impressed, but proud of everybody in this city, in council, and in the citizens, that we focused on what was most important, was the infrastructure tax. And individuals placed their need within departments, whether it be public works, parks and racor, one of the public safety departments, put those purchases off. We know that that cost us twenty-six thousand dollars. So again, being a guardian of the people's money, I wanna make sure that we're making the best decision, that we're not rushing into something, but if it's something that we need to do. So I don't know how to ask those questions without being here until seven or eight at night. So my first question would be, can we get a little bit of information as far as what, you know, the timeframe that it takes to build the pumper? I assume it takes an extended time to build a Quint.
Twelve, twelve point five months.
Okay.
I don't know what timeframe, I don't know for sure on Quint. But that's one question.
We know that if we were to purchase the Quint, we would have to remodel one of the buildings to house it, correct?
Or build a new station.
Or build a new station. But we have no idea when that could be a conflict either.
So that's actually forward planning?
Mm-hmm, that's what I'm saying.
Yes.
So even if we, let's make the assumption that we buy the Quint, vote to buy the, the pumper tonight, and we say we're planning to buy a Quint in two years, are we gonna start that remodeling?
Within two years, I think, as our city grows and it continues to grow, we will probably have an idea where we need to put our next station. Actually, Marvin and I, we talk about it all the time. I hate to let it out where we think we need it, but, 'cause that ground maze, poof, obviously, it went from ten thousand dollar an acre to fifty thousand acre, right, real fast. So I really don't wanna get into that, but yes, that's part of our planning, yes.
There's too many probabilities and mazes and ifs and possibilities. I'm just not comfortable with doing this right now.
You mean buying a engine period?
Buying anything, anything big right now. I think we need to, to step back and reevaluate, but that's my opinion.
Well, I mean, and I don't know how to ask this question without, you know, leaving us here longer than we should. Is there, is there, again, I'm taking the recommendation of you and the fire chief, as we've researched this, and this is what's in the best interest of the city, not just from a financial standpoint, but even the public safety, that we need to replace that vehicle.
I see. Yes.
Is it need, is the ninety-six putting anybody in our community at risk?
Well, it's a frontline pumper right now, and, I mean, we've had it work on the ponds, we've had to work on several things, and it's not even been in use. It doesn't do, I mean, it's, it's been good for what it's been for. If we have to have it right now, no, we probably don't. I'm not gonna sit here and say, "Yes, we got to have it right now." But I do want, I wanna know that it may go, by the end of the year, it may be another twenty thousand. I do not know. That's what I wanna let the council know and be aware of where we're at. With, with the cost of, the base price is not going up, it's the cost of the metal and all of it, everything just keep, keep going up. So I don't know, the seller can tell me that entry, so.
Well, once again, we agree with this tonight, we're not gonna get to see a truck for a year. Right? Are we making plans that sometime in March or April, that we're looking at remodeling a, a, one of the stations to house a Quint in thirty-six months? That's what I'm saying. Again, I'm asking these questions, I don't know the answer to it. I don't even know what we need from the council standpoint. I'm counting on people that are in the, in the leadership positions to tell us that. So, you know, I know when we buy police cars, we don't have this type of discussion. You know? We say, we're told we need this, replace this, and that's what we do.
It's a big purchase, folks.
I don't know, I don't have it. Everybody knows that.
The truck we've got right now is twenty-two years old. A year from now, it'll be twenty-three years old. And the cost factor to replace it would be a lot more.
Well, once again, waiting costs the citizens of this community twenty-six thousand dollars.
Right.
I think it was beneficial to wait until the infrastructure tax was passed, 'cause that was a priority. And again, I can't, I can't say enough how proud of the city and the council and member department had to put expenditures off to make sure that the public knew that their money was spent correctly, as they do constantly.
Well, this, the funding for this fire truck comes from the Hessen tax.
Right.
Which is, which is the fire and police tax. And within that Hessen tax is also a clause there where they have to have thirty percent of that going into either equipment or buildings. And so that money actually has been saved in there for.
Right. It's restricted.
Things like this, yes, things like this right here.
And most individuals can understand this, some of the general public doesn't. You know, they see, whether, if the city's buying new pickups for public work, you know, why do we need to pass an infrastructure tax? Well, it's a piece of equipment we needed just. Same way with this. This money comes from a tax that has nothing to do with infrastructure. But there again, the question is, are we doing it at the right time for the right amount of money? And that's, you know, when you're talking about five hundred and one thousand, six hundred and thirty-three dollars of my family and his family and your family's money, I wanna make sure that we ask the right questions and that we're making the right purchase. I'm for it in both ways.
Any further discussion?
The mayor, chief and the mayor are recommending that the need is there for the city of Harrison, correct?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mill, did you wanna say something to you today?
Yeah, you know, the chief and everybody have, have a great response. He discusses that with you. You know, there's a lot of questions here, and to get the exact numbers, maybe, you know, it might be in order, maybe, just, just recommendation, I mean, you all, the council, you make your decisions, and the chief and everybody, but maybe it's a good idea, maybe, to wait, bring this in committee, table this and bring it to committee and, and then do it. And stay within your window of what the chief has to deal with about the, the bid specs and everything, so you have the exact number, you know, maybe he can get those, those numbers, which I know he can, and it's a.
You talking about numbers on the Quint?
No, 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 numbers on the, the truck, the time factor, any other discussion you're gonna have, 'cause you're a little.
Our bid frame is.
And that's all I have to say.
I thought we'd already done that. We, our bid time, there is a time on this bid, believe it or not. There is a time.
Thirty-sixty percent.
By the, I think it's like, you know, we're running out like the seventeenth or twentieth of next month.
Yeah, it's forty-five days from Sep- from September sixth.
Yeah, this bid has a timeframe on it. But anyway, it's up to council, how they wanna.
Yeah, that's all.
Any, any further discussion? There being no further discussion, all of the favor by, yes, and?
Council, mayor, I'd like to talk about the ladder and the Quint a little bit too, because there has been a lot of discussion in the firehouse and hold respect for Chief Holt. But if we have forty-five days to put the bid in, could we talk about or do a little investigation, a little bit longer, about what the needs are? I know our backup truck is a first-line engine at the moment. How long's that first-line engine, the new Pierce in the shop for?
You don't know until the day they can give the timeframe. I'm hoping it's for two, three weeks, but.
It's usually not too long. The other part of that is, just as Chief Holt talked about, how long that new engine that we just got, they all have motor problems, pump problems, or this or that, and they go to the shop for a little bit. We also have an eighteen-year-old ladder truck that we have a lot of trouble with, that goes away sometimes for a long time, and we have no backup. If we were able to get a Quint, say, in a year, I know the freight, or the freight line or the ninety-six truck, we can still get parts for if we had to keep that backup truck going. And it's all just for discussion, because as a future council member, I'm concerned with the five hundred thousand dollars that we're gonna speak, or over half a million dollars. And so I wanna, and ex-fire department, I'd like to see both things come together and for us to be joined together. But we do have a little bit of time to play with to maybe put this together and see, and I don't know if you've got a committee you're working with chief, or what we can do, but.
It's, I mean, it's the same truck as what we, the last one we ordered. It's the same, it's the same truck, what's due to committee. There's no change, it's the same gears, sabers, it's two, what, two years newer, three years newer?
I know, I know when we went from a twelve to a fifteen on that Pierce truck, there were a lot of changes Pierce offered. I was interim chief then when we bought those trucks, and we took two months putting together that particular chassis in those trucks. So I'd like to see just the phone calls I'm getting, is they just haven't had enough input, maybe the committees that they had. I don't know, I don't know what you're doing. I know that I retired in June, and I don't wanna get into that part of it, but if we do have some time from September to sixth to forty-five days, if we could get together and talk about, do we want the medical bat boxes still in the cab, you know what I'm talking about? Since 2015, 2012, fire department talks a lot about the exposures that we're in, and the carbons that are on bunker gears, and the air packs after they use them, and they put them back in the seats. The new engines maybe have compartments to put all our contaminants in, because then we're getting into those same cabs of those trucks and driving home, and now we're finding out that the exposures are highly cancerous exposures that we're talking. So there's just a lot to bring up, and again, I've had some phone calls, and just if we could have that discussion, possibly, we could come up with some answers. So we've got the truck, does it need some changes? Do we need to get a Quint and save the money from this new truck today and wait a year? Will the freight liner last the year? As a backup normally, is that where it's, it's at? We got full, hundred percent ISO on that backup truck a couple of years ago, we got audited, and if it's running, we still. So we're not gonna get any ISO, that's a little subject matter, but there's a lot to figure when we start talking about half a million dollars, in my opinion, in some of the phone calls that I've had. So I don't know if we could just have a little bit of time, since we don't have, but this is still the month of September. I don't know, what does that put us in forty-five days from?
From the twenty-first.
So we do, if we can get together and talk and maybe get some figures and numbers, and we may very well just be getting this exact truck you're talking about, chief, and it would just be a more educated purchase, in my opinion. Thank you, council, mayor, chief.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
My next council, you would have to give me a bid.
Oh, it'll, the next council meeting will be past time.
Right, right. So either that, you'd have to have a special meeting.
Special call. Okay. Any further discussion? I have a motion in a second to purchase the five hundred and one thousand, six hundred and thirty-three pumper. All of the favor by eye?
Eye.
Call Rob, please.
Brian Oswald?
No.
Keith Kirkpatrick?
No.
Joe Williams?
Okay, what is it?
Yes, to buy the pumper, or?
No, not to buy it.
Yes.
Dana Taylor?
No.
Chris Head?
Yes.
Mary Jean Krieger?
No.
Mitch Magnus?
Yes.
John Ove?
Mayor? I die? Four-four. I can, uh, in understanding when there's a tie vote, the mayor votes, the mayor cannot believe or not vote no. He can abstain or vote yes. So in that instance, I voted yes.
So most of carry.
And the voting did carry at that.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I would be remiss if I didn't. I would be remiss if I didn't mention that at this point. I think we need to ask, um, you and the fire chief to make sure that we do some analysis of our current needs and assess whether we, what, what we need to the department.
All right. Let's see. Ms. Krieger, you have anything else here for me?
No, thank you.
Hello, Mr. Oswald?
For the way.
You got a step on down there, you don't have any?
Okay.
Uh, Mr. Head, you don't have anything other than what we got listed there, so you want to bring up anything else? All right, we'll move on down to our ordinances and resolutions. We have a T twenty-one committee here tonight, and I think they want to make another presentation before we get into this ordinance, so if you want to step up there, Ms. Bright?
Hello, I'm Alethee Bright. I'm the current chairman of Boone County Ignite. We're a youth coalition working towards preventing substance abuse in our youth. Uh, first of, we have representing us Jocelyn Dong, a new member of Ignite, Beyonce Satchfield, our co-chair, Tyler Madison, our secretary, and Hannah Roberts, our treasurer. I'd like to start off with just a few facts and statistics about what tobacco twenty-one is trying to accomplish. First of all, tobacco is the only legally sold product that is deadly when it is used as intended. Five thousand eight hundred people in Arkansas die each year from their own smoking. For every ten smokers that die, one non-smoker will be taken with them in Arkansas. Sixty-nine thousand Arkansas youth alive today, which is zero to seventeen, will ultimately die from premature smoking. In Arkansas, fifteen point seven percent of high school students smoke, that's about twenty-four thousand eight hundred students. Twenty-six point four percent of high school students use e-cigarettes or vapes. Ninety percent of smokers start before age eighteen, and fifty percent of all smokers die from smoking. One cigarette contains over seven thousand toxic chemicals, and sixty-nine of those are known to cause cancer. And nicotine is powerful, it's mood-altering, and extremely toxic and addictive, which is found in most tobacco products, including e-cigarettes and vapes. Um, eighteen point nine percent of young adults in the U.S. between the ages of eighteen and twenty-four smoke. Twenty-two point three of, three percent of adults in Arkansas smoke tobacco, and one in four adults in Harrison use tobacco. Almost no one starts smoking after the age twenty-five. Um, low-income populations, lower education populations, and empty promises of risk health problems with that population tend to be advertised highly. Uh, the flavors of additives and methods are also increased, and there is a higher use of advertisements in our current TV shows and movies. I'm not gonna read all of this, but this is here for you to look at. Um, basically what this is saying, that raising the age to twenty-one will significantly reduce the tobacco in our schools and will save thousands of youth lives. Um, ninety-four percent of smokers, uh, use their first cigarette before twenty-one and eighty-one percent before eighteen. And the tobacco industry's target are young people and our poor people in our community. And the sales to age of twenty-one to buy alcohol to twenty-one resulted in alcohol, low alcohol consumption among our youth, which decreased alcohol dependence and has led to dramatic reduction in drug-driving fatalities, fatalities. The National Academy of Medicine, uh, has asked and given us statistics for if the age was raised, raised to twenty-one. Uh, tobacco would have decreased by twelve percent by the time teenagers or adults in smoking-related deaths will decrease by ten percent. Smoking initiation will be reduced by twenty-five percent, uh, from the ages fifteen to seventeen, and fifteen percent for the ages eighteen to twenty. Um, nationwide, it would prevent about twenty-two, uh, two hundred and twenty-three thousand deaths among people born between two thousand and two thousand and nineteen, including fifty thousand here dying from lung cancer. There's, it's nationwide, there's, uh, tons of places like DC has passed tobacco twenty-one, New York City, Boston, Chicago, and hundreds of communities. Uh, Arkansas, uh, in Arkansas West Tana, Tana West Tana has already passed it, and so has, uh, Phyllis County, and Mountain Home is considering this ordinance and is still currently working toward it. And is there...
Thank you, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, well, as we had in discussion in committees, and they presented a break program in committees, uh, and Vanna has provided in front of you a ordinance. It all had to check out, you had to test totally, but, uh...
Mr. Mayor, I have read it. I got it, started on it just as soon as I got it. Bottom line for me is this is the right thing to do to take a step towards protecting our children, and I am one hundred percent in favor of passing this ordinance. Please, uh, I just have a question for the students. Are you headed to Boone County next?
Uh, not, uh, it's not the next in line, but we will work towards other communities in our county to have...
I feel like we need to get it countywide.
We will get...
So that it's not unfair to our city businesses.
Yes.
This will be an ordinance requiring three readings. They don't have to all be done tonight, depending on whatever your pleasure is, but it does require three readings.
Okay, is that, anybody else have anything before we get into this? I'll entertain a mo- a motion to put it on its first reading by title only.
Well, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
I'm not much up on this subject, but I know that I've been reading something on it, hearing on the radio about this new thing that has caused wet lung, or is that, is that included in this?
I think that's the baby.
It is the baby.
Exactly. Okay. And that's included in this.
I didn't know if there was something new. I heard the term jewel marked out there, and I didn't know. I just have to...
Okay. So I'll make a motion, we, uh, put it on its first reading.
By title only.
By title only.
I'll second.
Yeah, a motion to put it on the first reading by title only, and a second, any discussion?
I am concerned with one thing, for the ordinance, but I, Mr. Head's point is, I was gonna bring out, it is, uh, puts businesses within the city limits at a distinct disadvantage.
All right, they can just walk across the street, Allen St. Limson, by, um, that's why it's so important if that, that county comes on ordinance, too.
We are moving towards that. We've got a, um, meeting with Lead Hill, um, in a couple of weeks, and then we're gonna head towards, um, court.
But you gotta start someplace, folks.
Oh, absolutely, yes. I think that they, they may be looking at us to make the move first.
I agree. I agree.
I don't... Did you have anything?
It's all to pleasure, as mentioned, uh, nationwide even, vendors are only gonna suffer two to three percent loss on income from that, uh, loss of demographics, so it should be minimal as far as we get this ban just being there.
Okay, any further discussion? I'll have a clerk call roll, please.
Keith Kirkpatrick?
Yes.
Joel Williams?
Yes.
Dana Taylor?
Yes.
Chris Head?
Yes.
Mary Jean Krieger?
I have to predict this, with, I think, if an eighteen-year-old can get married, votes, volunteered to go into fight.
Mary Jean, the discussion's over, please, yes or no?
No.
Mitch Magnus?
Yes.
John Ove?
Yes.
Brian Oswald?
Yes.
An ordinance raising the minimum legal age to purchase tobacco products from eighteen years of age to twenty-one years.
It's up to the council to spend the rules?
I'd like to do so, mayor.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to spend the rule, place on the second and third reading by title only.
Some move?
Second?
I have a motion and a second, any discussion in this one? There being no discussion, I'll have the clerk call roll, please.
Joel Williams?
Yes.
Dana Taylor?
Yes.
Chris Head?
Yes.
Mary Jean Krieger?
No.
Mitch Magnus?
We're voting to suspend the rules, or we're just...
Second and third reading was the motion.
I say no.
John Ove?
Yes.
Brian Oswald?
Yes.
Keith Kirkpatrick?
Yes.
Motion, please.
Six, six to two? Okay, that motion carries. Okay, uh, I'll entertain a motion for adoption, excuse me, excuse me.
An ordinance raising the minimum legal age to purchase tobacco products from eighteen years of age to twenty-one years.
Okay, we can take the next step, and, uh, I do have, have to entertain a motion for adoption.
Some move?
Second.
Uh, motion, second and discussion. All of them favored by aye on this one?
Aye.
All opposed, same.
Aye.
Okay, uh, I'll entertain a motion that if we do not do the emergency clause, it will be thirty days from publication, is that right?
Yes.
And then if we do do the emergency clause, it will be at the date of the publication. Uh, I'll entertain it.
I would recommend that, you know, you, you leave it for the thirty days, and there's no reason to throw this into the face because we're not ready to force it yet anyone.
I would, like I said, if anybody wants to make that motion, that's up to the, the P.O., the van had, I think we need to leave it.
Since the police chief is not here.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay. Okay, so it will be, uh, thirty days from publication. Okay, we'll move down into, um, the Wi-Fi resolution, and then everybody got a copy of that? Now, that is only authorizing, uh, for the placement of the equipment. What do you want to...
Correct, this, this is just authorize them to locate the equipment on our property, uh, should they reach a point that they're fully funded for the project. So I don't know if they plan on coming back and asking the council to anticipate the funding, uh, they're still working on that part of it, but, uh, just having, uh, the permission to locate it on our property will help with the grant of the work. That's one reason why we've gone ahead and brought this particular resolution forward.
This is just a resolution, this is, like, like you said, this is permitting the use of equipment in city parks, with their, with their single equipment in the city park. There's no money involved, but if it happens to fall through, there's no big deal about it.
I make the motion to approve the resolution.
Approve certainly, and a second. Any further discussion?
The young lady's not here tonight?
No.
I still find this to be incredible of a young person to put this into effect, so I'm, I want to commend her again publicly for her work.
A lot of work. Okay, any further discussion? There being none, I'll, all of them favored by aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same. Thank you. Okay, we're gonna go into a little housekeeping here on the zoning, cracks and ordinance, something that, uh, the amount that slipped through, crack years ago, and Vanna, you want to say anything about this?
Well, Wade, Wade knows the technical parts of this. I would only say that we do need to, if you're inclined to approve this, we do need to do all readings tonight and adopt the emergency clause. We do have a business transaction waiting on this, if you approve it.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion to put it on its first reading by title only.
Some move?
Second.
I have a motion and a second.
Second?
Any discussion? There being no discussion, I'll have, or call roll, please.
Joel Williams?
Yes.
Dana Taylor?
Yes.
Chris Head?
Yes.
Mary Jean Krieger?
Yes.
Mitch Magnus?
Yes.
John Ove?
Yes.
Brian Oswald?
Yes.
Keith Kirkpatrick?
Yes.
An ordinance correcting the zoning map code title fourteen for certain land tracks.
Make a motion to place the ordinance on its second and third reading by title only.
Can you make a motion to suspend the rule for...
Oh, I will do that. I'll make a motion to suspend the rules.
You did.
Right.
Okay, that is a second.
Second.
Okay, I hear a second, okay. Any discussion? There being no discussion, I have a clerk call roll, please.
Dana Taylor?
Yes.
Chris Head?
Yes.
Mary Jean Krieger?
Yes.
Mitch Magnus?
Yes.
John Ove?
Yes.
Brian Oswald?
Yes.
Keith Kirkpatrick?
Yes.
Joel Williams?
Yes.
An ordinance correcting the zoning map code title fourteen for certain land tracks.
I'll entertain a motion for adoption.
Some moves?
Can you get who, who on the...
We got Magnus.
I'll second.
Okay. Okay, that, in discussion on the adoption. There being no discussion, all of them favored by aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same.
Do we need a motion to, to entertain the emergency, there's an act of emergency clause, I'll make that motion.
I'll second that motion.
Yeah, a motion, second, enact emergency clause. Any discussion?
And again, Wade, in all of this, this is already approved by the planning zoning commission, and all we're doing is making it match.
This is a correction, a correction.
We called our... I'm just making it so that publicly it's on the record that what our court has done approved.
The C-three zoning was approved by the planning commission and the city council nineteen eighty-six. Nineteen eighty-six. We just messed up one of the more recent maps.
I understand, I'm just making it for public record in case something comes up.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, we have any further discussion on the emergency clause? There being none, all of them favored by aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same. Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, I think, well, you're, you're, you're... This next resolution is actually just something that, uh, you know, Wade and I still have to work on this to the state, on putting this sign up, uh, this will maybe help, you know, pass the resolution in support of it, but, uh, still, it has to be state-approved, put the, the borough board sign up, Brandon Borough Board. So, that being said, uh, it is only a, uh, resolution. If anybody would like to make that motion, they can get started on it.
I'll make that motion.
I have a motion.
Second.
And I have a second. Any discussion?
Again, Mr. Mayor, I'm in favor of this, but I wanted to make sure, just like we did with, uh, the discussion with Boots Mayberry, and then there'd be other individuals that come forward that think someone needs some sort of recognition, and, um, I think that, um, the Burrowsworth family, and specifically Brandon, they made a great contribution on behalf of Harrison and their reputation and the story itself, but I'm just making that point.
There's always that.
Yes, sir.
There's always that. So, any further discussion? There being none, all of them favored by aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same.
Aye.
I have one, one opposed.
Motion carries.
Motion carries. Okay. Really, the only thing we got left out here is the underlying, like, Harris Bridge, and, and, uh, I think, Wade, you, you may want to touch on that just a little bit. It's not, we're not enacting anything on that, just that, that they have got permission from the state to do certain things.
Yeah, we, we met with representatives from DOT to discuss...
That, that part is light up, Harrison, they actually live, so, they live, but if nobody's got, we really don't have to vote on it, if nobody, unless somebody got a problem, if somebody got a problem with them doing, putting the lights there, they might speak up right now.
And is the cost of the electricity running lights, is that whose expense?
That will be through the city, 'cause they'll be running off of our grid.
But they are LED lights?
They are LED. I'm not sure we'll notice much of it.
It's actually went down a little bit from the prior year, the cost. So adding the additional lights may eventually take us back to where we were, but not anything extensive.
Again, that's one of my deals about taking the money and keeping everybody happy. Right here.
Yeah, next to your heart.
Yep.
Okay, all right, I guess if I had a problem with that, so I'll open up the council, anybody on the council, you wanna bring up anything?
The only thing I would bring up, again, is during our discussion on the fire truck, again, it's important to me that we make sure that we're doing what's in the best interest of the city, so I would challenge you and the chief, Chief Holt, to, to make sure that we're on the right path, and then engage the fire department and any, you know, former members of the fire department, and make sure that we're buying the right stuff, and properly equipped and such.
Anybody in the audience like saying anything? Okay, I'll entertain a motion for German.